Good morning, everyone. I'm Thomas Rager Meek, Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College Assistant Board of Trustees of the Board. We appreciate your presence and thanks for your interest in the business of this system, in the business of this board. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Lester Spencer, pastor of St. James Church in Montgomery, who will be giving our indication.
Thank you, Al. I wanted to say, as a pastor and as a citizen of the state of Alabama, it's really inspiring to be here this morning and see all of these great leaders gathered together to focus on the education of many thousands across our state. So, I just want to say thank you and it's an honor to be here at this moment. That's great. Lord, thank you for this board and for those in leadership here today. Thank you for their passion, their commitment, their faithfulness. Al, I pray that you will guide them today as they deliberate and as they make decisions that impact thousands of lives. I pray that you will guide them, bless them, and direct them in every decision that's made. Christ alive. Amen. Thank you.
(inaudible) (inaudible) the life of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I have this approval of the today's agenda on board members pursuing this advancement meeting. As you can see, at this time, I would like to take note of motion by Mr. Davis. Second, on this ground, any discussion? This time, we're sitting in a discussion. This time, we'll do a vote. All those in favor approve today's agenda, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? The agenda is approved. Item five, approval of the minutes December eleventh, twenty nineteen meeting. Board members receiving these minutes and the plans of today, and it's from the committee. At this time, I will take a motion on the minutes. Motion by Mr. Davis. Second, on Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Any changes to the minutes? December eleventh. Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve the minutes of December eleventh, twenty nineteen meeting, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? And so, put it. Item six, public comments. We have a very special guest with us today, Dr. Bill Whelan, who will hear from our lady. But also with us, we have a special college spotlight, Drake State. And we have a very special guest, Mr. Kirk Salman, and I'm looking forward to hearing from Drake State.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, Chancellor Baker, members of the board, Dr. Bill Whelan, and our other special guests. Drake State is delighted to kick off the college spotlight. Thank you, Chancellor, for the opportunity for us to highlight the students we serve and the quality programs and trainings that we're providing for them as we prepare them for the workforce, because we are indeed training and transforming the workforce of Alabama. I'm excited to introduce you all to Mr. Kirk Salman, who's a recent graduate of Drake State. And by recent, I mean December two thousand nineteen. Recent. So Kirk is a resident of Huntsville, but he was born and raised in Canada. And he and his wife Candace relocated to the area in the early two thousands, and they live there now with their four children, Kealan, Kirsten, Connor, and Kate. Love those K's and Z's. So Kirk began his computer information systems program at Drake in the fall of two thousand seventeen. And during his time at Drake, he's worked throughout the college. He's worked in information technology, and videography, and television broadcasting. And he's also served as president of the Drake State Cyber Security Club. Kirk was also selected as a Thurgood Marshall College Fund Leadership Institute Scholar. Kirk has been a four-point O Presidential Scholar student throughout his tenure at Drake State. He recently started his new position, so he graduated December nineteen, and he's already working, our graduate work, at the Cook Museum in Decatur, Alabama. So I'm delighted to introduce you to Mr. Kirk Salman.
I would like to thank Chairman Thompson and Chancellor Baker, the board members, and Dr. Patricia Sims, and our CIS Division Chair, instructor Dr. Dolores Smothers, for inviting me to address you today. I'd also like to thank my wife for allowing me to come. Leaving her home with four children is always a big ask. earning my associate's degree in computer information systems at Drake State has been a life-changing experience. Over, in a little over two years ago, at the age of thirty-six, I found myself working in a job that I loved, but with very little opportunity for advancement. It was something that I had fallen into as I traveled along the road of life. But financially, it had become a trap rather than a blessing. My wife, very thankful for her, saw my potential more clearly than I did, and she began to encourage me to make a career change. Knowing the challenges the job market would present, we agreed that I would earn my associate's degree first, but under two conditions. I had to continue working full-time while going to school, and we couldn't go into debt to pay for my schooling. I chose Drake State because it was affordable, it offered smaller class sizes, had a good record of graduates who found jobs in the area, and it offered online courses and a class schedule that was flexible enough to allow me to continue working while I was attending. During the application and registration process, I was encouraged to apply for and was awarded the Institutional Academic Scholarship, which I maintained throughout my time at Drake State. With that and other grants and scholarships, I was able to complete my associate's degree without going into debt. The coursework at Drake State prepared me for the certifications that I needed in the computer information industry. I've already taken and passed my A-plus and Security Plus certifications, and I'll be taking my Network Plus certification in the next few weeks, which will be paid for through a scholarship offered by a local business, an opportunity that Drake State helped to facilitate for their students. This past fall, I also received a scholarship from Apple to travel to Washington DC for three days to attend the Thurgood Marshall College Funds Leadership Institute. I don't have the time now to do justice to what I was able to gain from that experience. The skills I learned helped me in my job search and will continue to assist me in a variety of ways as I navigate the corporate landscape as a leader and an employee. I'm happy to tell you that my time at Drake State, as Dr. Sims mentioned, has paid off in a very tangible way. The day after my last class, I accepted the position as the System Administrator for the Cook Museum of Natural Science in Decatur. Without my time at Drake State, I would not have had the skills, knowledge, or courage to apply for or receive such a wonderful career placement. I'm very grateful to the staff and faculty of Drake State for their patience, knowledge, and support through my academic journey. They have been an important part in the advancement of my career and the quality of life that I'm able to provide for my family as I move forward. I'm proud of my school and the college system of Alabama as they continue to train students for the workforce and offer them an opportunity for a better life. Thank you.
Kirk, thank you so much for sharing your story with us. Dr. Sims, thank you for your leadership there at Drake State, for the fine programs that you offer. That was just wonderful to hear. Very impressive. This is a feature that will be often, we will have at each board meeting, and I'm looking at the chats from the staff, and we're just looking forward to hearing more success stories like that from so many students across the state. At this time, we'll go to item eight, Academic and Student Affairs, and Old Education, Consultants, and Physical Information Technology, Workforce Development, and Advanced Life. Item eight, Day one, Division Police from the City of Gadsden, or Gadsden State Community College, which is on the floor, session next to one. Early break down this, and had opportunity to ask questions. At this time, I will take a motion by Mr. Wood, second, and Mr. McInnes. Discussion. Mr. McInnes, he's busy with the science, and he's had, and seemed like a real relationship. Great partnership with the city. I think it's one way of having the city. Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve this Division Police from Gadsden State Community College, and City of Gadsden, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Item eight, Day two, acceptance of donation real property for Drake State Community College. This was on the floor, session, and just round, pulling a motion. Section, on this round, second, second on this floor.
I have the opportunity in this process, and a lot of great things going on, and working to create an educational board, and we're excited about the opportunity to do this. Glad to hear.
Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve the acceptance of this real property at Drake State Community College, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Item eight, Day three, demolition of laws, and all accounting community college. At this time, I will take a motion. Motion by this round, second, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. Any other comments? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve this additional renovation of the technology classroom, and the state community college. At this time, I will take a motion. Second, by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve this additional renovation, recent metal, for technical classroom, technology classroom, and the state signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Item eight, Day five, bond refinancing for law state community college council. At this time, I will take a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second, second by Mr. Wood. Any discussion?
Chairman, just like saying, I had an opinion of this, and I had a hard time explaining it. It's a great thing to be doing, and save a million dollars. Another million dollars that can be put towards education. Thankful for the president to continue to pursue these opportunities to renew that bonds. We're at a historic low, and it's our opportunity is fresh.
Mr. McInnes, thanks for the review of the finance in our committee. I especially appreciate the Chancellor, Chancellor's leadership, and the staff's leadership, and the president's leadership to review all these bonds across the state, and some great savings. It's well worth it. Any other comments? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve the bond refinancing for law state community college council, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Motion here is. Item eight, Day six, recent medal of recommendation of the well-considered business executive of law state community college council. At this time, I will take a motion. Section, on this round, any discussion? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve this well-considered business executive of law state community college council, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? All right. Section nine, Executive League of Public Information. Item nine, Day one, the twenty-twenty legislative agenda, just been on the works, and certainly with the board. At this time, I will take a motion, the legislative legislature. Motion by Mr. Smith, second, second by Mr. McInnes. Any discussion? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve the twenty-twenty legislative agenda, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Item nine, Day two, twenty-twenty-one budget request for the Alabama community college system. At this time, I will take a motion on this. Motion by Mr. Davis, second, second by Mr. McInnes. Any discussion? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor approve the twenty-twenty-one budget request for Alabama community college system, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Item nine, Day three, recommended appointment, or handed to board trustees and advisors from the area, military institute. At this time, I will take a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith, second, second by Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Having now seen the candidate, very pleased to have someone willing to serve in this capacity. Seeing the further discussion, we move to vote, all those in favor approve the coming up to the board trustees, and by the area, the area institute, signify by raising your hand. Any other questions? Motion here is. Item nine, Day four, very special, five years, permanent, out of the merit list. Sam Moan, permanent state community college. At this time, I will take a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing that we'll move to vote, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any other comments?
Good morning. My name is Danny Perry, and I'm the Dean of Workforce Development and Career Technology Education of Trinn State Community College. And I come before you today on behalf of the top of the staff of Trinn State Community College to read a declaration for the Department of the Top of the Merit List to a recently retired President, Mr. Sam Moan. Whereas, in special recognition of distinguished service to Trinn State Community College and the Alabama Community College System, Trinn State requests the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees to authorize Trinn State to confer on Mr. Sam Moan the title of President Emeritus, and whereas, Mr. Moan earned his Bachelor of Arts in History and Political Science from Stillman College, a Master of Arts in Guidance and Counseling from Alabama State University, and a Certificate of Vocational Education from Alabama H&amp;M University. And whereas, Mr. Moan began and thereafter served his career at Trinn State as an Educational Talent Search Coordinator from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-one, Coordinator of Evening Programs from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-two, Technical Industrial Internship and Co-op Program Coordinator from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-three, Program Instructor, CETAs Summer Youth Program in nineteen eighty-three, Veterans Affairs Director and Assistant Financial Aid Director from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-eight, Instructor of Related English and Psychology, nineteen eighty-nine, Coordinator of Student Services from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-five, Title III B Activity Five Director from two thousand one to two thousand seven, and Dean of Student Services from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand seven, and finally, Interim President in two thousand seven. Whereas, Mr. Moan has served as President from two thousand seven to present, serving as the Chief Administrative Counselor for the College in direct reporting relationship to the Chancellor of the Alabama TV College System. And whereas, Mr. Moan has provided exemplary leadership in guiding Trinn State to the acquisition of SAC COC accreditation, thus opening the door to becoming a TV college. Mr. Moan's other accomplishments include enrollment has decreased by an all-time high of fifty-three percent from one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight students in two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen students in fall of two thousand nineteen. The retention rate has risen from thirty-seven percent to sixty-one percent. New programs have been established to include diagnostic medical sonography, medical radiology technology, respiratory therapy, registered nursing, cybersecurity, advanced manufacturing, and business administration. The college was awarded a grant totaling four hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars from the United States Department of Agriculture to create the South Central Alabama Distance Learning Network, and a four hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollar grant awarded by the Alabama Department of Commerce to create a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Occupational Skills Training Program. Buildings have been renovated on the Trinn campus at a cost of approximately twelve million dollars, and Patterson site renovations at approximately fifteen million dollars, including renovated facilities, improving infrastructure, and constructing the automotive manufacturing center. The Colonial Arts Program was moved to downtown Montgomery, given the college a downtown presence. A seven-acre truck driving track was added to increase truck driving graduates from seventy-six to one hundred and six. Transferred relationships were established with Troy University of Montgomery, Auburn University of Montgomery, Lawton University, Alabama State University, University of West Alabama, Ten Hunsen College. A pedestrian bridge was constructed connecting the library to the main campus. A legacy garden was constructed on the campus. The Workforce Development Division increased offerings. Bookworm Bound Program received funding, and an instructional site was established in Lake County. And whereas, Mr. Moan has served, the Alabama Community College System has passed President and Treasurer of the Alabama Community College System Presidents Association and the Alabama Dean of Student Affairs Association. And whereas, Mr. Moan has served in several professional organizations to include the American Association of Minority Veteran Program Administrators, Vice Chairman, Alabama Association of Legion British Corps to Mission Officers, National Association for Equal Opportunity in Our Education, Alabama Skills USA, National Coalition of Advanced Technology Centers, Alabama Association of Montgomery County Department of Indian Resources Board, Job Corps Advisory Member, United Way, Family Guided Center Board, Tuckabachie Boy Scout Council, Tutor Step Program at Dexter Avenue and King Memorial Baptist Church, Substance Abuse Youth Networking Organization, Partners in Education, Leadership Montgomery, Leadership Alabama, Youth Leadership Montgomery, Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Montgomery Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Montgomery Chamber of Commerce of one hundred, Montgomery Chamber of Commerce of one hundred Board of Control, Jubilee Board of Directors, Region Five Workforce Development Council, COC Education and Workforce Development Council, Capital City Club Board of Governors, Small Business Resource Center, Montgomery Metro YMCA Board, and Montgomery Area Business Committee for Big Parts. Whereas, Mr. Moan has received numerous achievement awards, including the Lakin Institute presented by the President's Roundtable two thousand four, and Alabama Community College Leadership Academy two thousand, two thousand one. Whereas, Mr. Moan has served as a presenter and guest speaker at the Alabama Deans of Students Association of Learning International, Noel Levitt's Conference, the National Association of Veteran Program Administrators, the Alabama Veterans Affairs Association, and Louisiana Veteran Affairs Association. And whereas, Mr. Moan has exhibited strong support of student services for Trinn State Community College by coordinating the Honor's Day Program, Veterans Day Program, Black History Celebration, Coordination of Mr. Moan, and Valentine's Ball, Counselors' Night Out, SDA Elections, Christmas Feast, Tech Prep Day, Red Cross Blood Drive, Annual Back to School Festival, Faculty and Staff Awards Programs, Annual Career Day, Parent Orientation, Student Orientation, Drug Awareness Program, instituted the Adopt a School Program, Founder and Organizer of the Trinn Tox, Student Ambassador, Alabama Skills Olympics, Who's Who's among students in American Junior Colleges, Outstanding Student Awards, Outstanding Alumni Awards, All Academic Team and Student Leadership Institute. And whereas, Mr. Moan demonstrated the commitment to excellence, personal accountability, passion for community college education, unwavering support for students, respect for fellow employees, and servant leadership to Trinn State for forty years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and honors Mr. Sam Moan for authorizing Trinn State Community College to confer on him the title of President Emeritus. Yet further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its deep appreciation to Mr. Sam Moan for his dedication and service to Trinn State Community College and the Alabama Community College Systems and citizens of Alabama, adopted by the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees this eighth day of January two thousand and twenty.
To Mr. Thompson, Vice Chair, to the Board of ACCS, to our Chancellor, to Dr. Whelan, just want to thank you all for this honor. I spent forty years in education, most of those years spent at Trinn State Community College. You could say I grew up with the system. When Danny was reading all of the accomplishments a few minutes ago, it's a very proud moment for me, but at the same time, none of this work was done alone. There are people at our college dedicated their lives, their spirit, their emotions, in helping Trinn become successful. We often think that students know what they're doing and where they're going. My forty years say, no. I oftentimes sit across the desk from students, and they have no idea where they're going. I oftentimes sit across the desk from students, and they have no idea where they're going or what they're going to do. But because of the work we do in this system, we change lives, not only for those students, we change lives for their families, their friends, their communities, and we change lives for the state of Alabama. When I started this journey forty years ago, there were forty-four colleges in this system. These colleges reported to the State Board of Education, and Dr. Wayne T. was the Superintendent. Trenton had an enrollment of nine hundred and ninety-eight, I'm sorry, six hundred and ninety-eight students, and tuition was ninety dollars per quarter, not semester. Colleges also had buses running all over the state. Gas at that time was eighty-six cent a gallon, and you could buy a new car for a little more than eight thousand dollars. All my years at Trenton, there are two things that I require of the people who I dealt with, and especially those who worked under my leadership. Number one, students first. We live and we die by what we do for students. And number two, treat everyone, everyone, vendors, students, teachers, staff people, even the maintenance people. You treat them all with dignity and respect. And I'm here to tell you, I've tried my best over the last forty years to do just that. You know, when we became SAC's credit a few years ago, when we started that process, Dr. Claudette Williams was our representative. And I remember what she told us on that fateful day during that candidacy dinner. She said, "Y'all are young. You're drinking milk now. But I'm gonna tell you, when I come back in a year, I want you to be weaned from that milk, and I want you to be eating solid food." And you can tell by the accomplishments of our college that we did get weaned from the milk, and we're now eating that solid food. And I leave you today saying that, yes, Trenton is eating the solid food, and our students will be the best for that. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, President Emeritus. We're so pleased to have your family on the guest, here today, your wife, Marya Munle, daughter, Samaria Munle, Jim Johnson, son-in-law, Kimba Johnson, daughter, Coria, Noam James, and son-in-law, Chuck. We've got plenty of vacation there, sit with the president, send him a graduation. Chancellor, you may proceed.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Human Resources Department here at the System Office. And I have one lady I'd like to introduce briefly, and that would be Ms. Dana Oll. Ms. Dana, will you stand, please? Dana has been serving as our interim State Director of Adult Education, and she's certainly no stranger to the field. She has worked for twenty-four years in adult education, from GED and ESL instructor to Adult Education Coordinator for Coastal Alabama Community College, and as Director of Adult Education at Calhoun Community College. So we certainly appreciate your expertise, and thank you so much.
Young lady has agreed to come work with us to continue the process of the students at Trenton to take in the solid food. Anita Arce, please. Anita is not totally new to the system. She actually worked with us, has all this background. Certainly years ago, government leaders, she has a unique credential of experiences in the state, and probably amongst the more knowledgeable people south state. I'm excited about her opportunity, and I know that she and Sam have already spent time talking about the future. I'm excited about the opportunity that exists for her to provide leadership at Trenton, and we're just looking forward to great things to see.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back to the school, students. That's always important. When I was here back in 2011, eleven, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-one, it was great to be here, working in Montgomery, to have my old friends, I did, my new ones. Good to know you're here, so thank you for the opportunity, board members. I appreciate this opportunity to be a part of this family. And President Munle, thank you for your great leadership. It was very simple, Sid, we had talked to him for over an hour about what was going on, and we're so open to transfer members. And we appreciate that, and look forward to calling you up and saying, hey, what's going on?
At this time, as we get into the Chancellor's Report, as I alluded to earlier, we have a very special and distinguished guest today, Dr. Bell Whelan, President of SAC's Commission on Colleges, our accrediting agency for our institution. Dr. Whelan has served a long tenure, distinguished tenure at SAC COC. Her leadership is well-known throughout the nation. I was one of the first people to greet her last night, and I introduced myself as the board chair, and she said, "Well, bless you." And I did not know if it was a blessing or blasphemy. But Dr. Whelan, you were last with us in 2015. Most of our board still has the same membership, and we well-remember your excellent presentation, Nina, from time to time, and I feel like we need a refresher course. I could email that link to that video to the board members, along with a few other comments. And so we try and stay focused on our mission. But anyway, thank you for being here, and I'm looking so forward to your presentation, Nina, and I'll be doing a proper hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you and the members of the board, Chancellor, and all my colleagues out there who consider you colleagues. Thank you for inviting me back. I'm not quite sure what you think I'm gonna say differently, but we'll see what's going on. As I indicated last night, there are some changes that are coming down the pipe for which we're trying to prepare. And today, I want to mention a few of them because I have no idea in which direction our board is going to go. I also want to thank President Colagros for all of her, there she is, for all of her service to the board. We recruited her back to help again on a committee that she said, "Please let me off of this committee," but she was gracious enough to come back. And to welcome Roger Bates to the board, to thank Kimba Chambers, she's lost in the crowd, for another year of service, and to welcome Pat Sims to the Executive Council. Pat will be one of my bosses. Now, we'll see how that one works. We're also friends. There are still a lot of things swirling about accreditation. There is so much going on in higher education, so many people who have various opinions about what we do and how we should do it. I often quip that anybody who drives by a college, you know, figures that they now know how to run one better than the people who are employed there because we have more suggestions on things we ought to be doing and stuff. But the reality is that there is a swirl going on. There are micro-certifications now that are being introduced by organizations that are not institutions of higher education, and we are being asked to accept either on faith or for us, because we rigorously review the program that they present in connection with our institutions to make sure that the students are still getting a quality education. One of the things that changed with the negotiated rulemaking that went on with the department this past year was to be that they would allow one hundred percent of a certificate or credential from one of these entities to be accepted for federal financial aid. And we fought back vehemently on that one because we don't know anything about the people who are teaching it or the people who, you know, or the curriculum that they're offering. We have depended forever on qualified faculty to make that determination, and so we got them to agree that we would keep that at fifty percent of a certification so that the institution still has to have input into what is this going on. So a lot of stuff going on, some of it is changing, some of it is not. Let's see, oh, this does work, good. Today, then, there are a couple of things that I want to do. I want to talk about accreditation in general, and then also to talk about what's going on with the commission. Until July first of 2020, there are three different types of accrediters. There are national accrediters, which were established probably forty, fifty years ago at the most, to accommodate institutions that all had similar missions, most specifically those institutions that had online programs, because we were not accrediting institutions that were totally online at that particular point. And there were also some subject areas like chiropractic institutions and, you know, lots of different specialties, and so they decided to start their own accrediting bodies. There were no geographic boundaries for those national accrediters, they could accredit institutions anywhere in the country. But again, their institutions had the same mission. Regional accrediters are much older. Our commission, for example, has been around since eighteen ninety-five. We like to think we know what we're doing, we're, at least they're still standing, and so are our institutions for the most part. But we do have geographic boundaries. Then there are programmatic or specialized accrediters that different institutions engage in their process so that their programs can have that extra oomph to them, if you will, and because many states are requiring that folks who get a teaching certificate, an engineering certificate, things like that, have a specialized accreditation. As of July first, we will not have national and regional accrediters anymore. The department has classified us now as institutional accrediters. So we have institutional accrediters and programmatic accrediters. And that sounds nice and simple, but what it does is it allows an institution to choose its institutional accreditor irrespective of where they're located, correction. It allows an institution to apply for membership with an institutional accreditor irrespective of where they're located. So someone from Ohio could apply for membership in the southern region. I'm not quite sure when they would, but, other than we're the best, but we're also the most rigorous, according to folks around the country. It does not require, however, that the accrediters accept those applications from others. So it's gonna, it could change our membership. I don't know how our board's gonna respond to that. I was talking with staff Monday when we got back off the holiday. Because I lamented over the entire holiday, trying to figure out, how are we going to do this? Because our board, for example, is a seventy-seven-member board, and it's representative of people from the eleven states that have traditionally been in our region. If we suddenly start accepting applications from institutions outside of the region, what is that gonna do to the board membership? Am I gonna have an even larger board, or am I gonna reduce the size of the board? So there are a lot of things that are involved in that. But right now, there are three types of accrediters. The regional accrediters have three purposes, the first of which, since eighteen ninety-five and continues to 2020, to be improvement or quality assurance of the offerings that are there at the institution, that the buildings are of high quality, that the staff is of high quality, that the curriculum is of high quality, everything that is done, that the governance of the institution, you know, is of the highest quality, and that has always been our number-one concern. Our second purpose, though, is to let the general public know that there is a rigorous process of review that institutions must undergo for them to feel comfortable to attend and spend their money there. You know, that this is not a fly-by-night kind of organization, and it is a difference. You don't have to be accredited in order to exist as an institution, but there's no guarantee of the quality that you get of those institutions that don't undergo some kind of rigorous review. The third purpose is to serve as the gatekeeper for federal financial aid with the federal government. We entered into a partnership in the 1950s with the Department of Education because they were trying to determine how to fund the GI Bill and where to send the money. And they decided that the accrediters had been in the field for a long time, and we understood and guaranteed that quality, that if an institution secured the accreditation of an accredited body, then they would allow them to avail themselves of federal financial aid, and since the 1950s. Since then, the federal government is somehow thinking that they own us, and so there are things that they try to put in place and tell us that we have to do that we end up saying, yo, dude, you can't tell me that. One of them is who our members can be. So we are kind of concerned about, you know, some of the changes that they're trying to make, because we are a private, not-for-profit membership organization. And while we agreed to partner with the federal government, and we, you know, agree that there are standards that they want to ensure that our institutions follow, that we will monitor that, that we don't, they don't own us. And so there are folks in DC who know how I feel about that. When you look at the characteristics of regional accreditation, the process itself is a very comprehensive process. We look at everything, from soup to nuts, and so we only do it once every ten years because, you know, as Sam indicated, you know, going through candidacy and going from milk to solid food is a process. If you have any children, you understand what that process was like when they were trying to do that. It is also, we have one set of standards that we use to evaluate the effectiveness of all seven hundred ninety-two of our member institutions, including the twenty-four that are here in Alabama with the community college system. The difference is, we evaluate each institution based on its own mission. So we use the same set of standards for Auburn and the University of Alabama that we do for Trenton State. It's just that we look to see, based on what you say you're about, how effective are you in what you're doing? And so it's worked for us. Our members decide those standards. My staff does not sit up and dream up stuff. We could, on many occasions, be much more creative than our standards. We could, you know, and yet our members have agreed that these are the things that we do. We look at the purpose and the mission of an institution. As I indicated, currently, we are regional in scope. I don't know if that's gonna change. It is a voluntary process because, as I said, you do not have to be accredited in order to exist. We have institutions that we accredit that do not accept federal financial aid either, but they're still accredited because of that second purpose, as I told you, of letting the public know that they're worth the risk, as it were, because they had undergone the process. We are not a governmental entity. You all own us, so when the Chancellor invites me, I say, sure, I'll be glad to come. You all pay my salary, I'll show up anytime you want to. I promised to bring a suitcase next time. We are a decentralized national system in that all of the regional accrediters do talk with each other regularly. We meet together in person three times a year. We have a bi-weekly phone call, and I'm sitting there looking at seventeen emails that have come in from them since seven o'clock this morning, because we talk to each other about what's going on, especially what's going on now during reauthorization of the Higher Act and stuff that's coming up in DC, because what impacts one of us impacts all of us. And so we try to make sure that we present a united front when we go to Washington to let folks know. We talk about what's going on in each of our states because there are things that the state legislators talk to each other across state lines as well. One of the examples of that, for example, is states are now beginning to mandate that institutions must have free, open speech zones, and they cannot charge extra for the security that may be necessary to, you know, to cover the event, as it were. That started with one state and has moved now to all but one of the states in our region has adopted that particular policy. So there are things that go on in different states, so we need to know, you know, what's happening in Massachusetts and, you know, and tell them what's going on in Alabama. We are not-for-profit. This is the current map of the regional accrediters, and I do know that Alaska does not belong down by southwest Texas, but it wouldn't fit on this slide if I hadn't put it down there. You can see by color what the regions look like. The red color for the southern region was not designed to be a political statement, though I guess it is very lovely. It just was the color that we used to draw the map. But you can see that we go- But you can see that we go from Texas up to Virginia and Kentucky and everything south. When the commission first started back in the 1800s, probably up until about 1930, both Arkansas and West Virginia were a part of our region. And the K-12 division, maybe you know the story behind that. I haven't heard it all yet, Mr. Newman, but the K-12 division got upset about some policy changes that were going on, and so they decided to leave. And they went north to the Higher Learning Commission, and their colleges and universities joined them, and they never asked to come back. So is that all you know, too?
That's all I know.
Oh, well, we've got to do better. We've got to find out the skeletons there. That's got to be crazy. But you can see that the New England region up in the top represents the New England states, the middle states. Each of the regions were established by the institutions in that particular area. So when they talk about getting rid of regions, there are cultural differences, there are political differences, there are all kinds of differences that exist, you know, among the different regions. And so for the University of Chicago, for example, to agree to some of our standards may not be realistic. So we're looking at all kinds of things, though. California, it says here that there are six regional accrediting associations, but there are seven bodies because in the western region, which is represented in California, Hawaii, and the Samoan Islands, which are those little pieces that are also down in the south Texas area here on this map, they have two different accreditors. One who accredits just community colleges and one who accredits the senior institutions. So we, and they have different presidents, different boards. So we talk about seven regional accreditors, even though there are only six associations because they're part of the same association. As I mentioned, we talk to each other a lot. We have formed an organization we call C-RAC, and we put that dash there intentionally because otherwise it'd be crack. And, you know, people don't always take us seriously anyway, and so we want to make sure they do. But that's the Council of Regional Accrediting Commissions, which is me and my six counterparts and our board chairs. And we get together in person once a year just to keep the board chairs collectively apprised of what's going on, you know, especially at the national level, and to get their input on, we're looking at these kinds of things, we're looking at pushing this in Washington. What do you think about it? How do you think your board, you know, would respond to it and stuff like that? So this meeting this year is coming up, the first week of February, so it will be an interesting conversation in light of negotiated rulemaking. As the institutions have to go through an accreditation process, the accreditors also have to go through a recognition process. The federal government wants to make sure that we're still doing what we said we were going to do with them. And so we go through a recognition process once every five years. And we have to submit a proposal, you know, showing that, kind of like the compliance certification the institutions do, showing that we're doing these things. The department makes a decision as to whether we're living up to that or not. They then make a recommendation to an advisory council to the Secretary of Education that's colloquially referred to as NASEKI. It is the National Advisory Committee on Integrity and Quality Improvement. I think that's what it stands for. That's why we call them NASEKI. We can remember all those things. But anyway, they are appointed by Congress and the administration, and they make a recommendation on the status of accreditors. The goal is for both the department and NASEKI to suggest that we should be re-recognized. Every five years that happens, I'm going to knock on this vermicap and say that we have always been recognized since 1955. Now, we have never lost our recognition. I'm not aware of any of the accreditors that has lost that recognition except one. Two years ago, ACICS, which was an accreditor that accredited some of the for-profit institutions, lost its recognition. The impact of that was every one of the institutions they accredited then could not get federal financial aid. And it was just like on the spur of the moment, just automatic. Once the recommendation went forward and the secretary said, I agree with it, then federal aid stopped. 200 institutions. Imagine just your 24 institutions trying to scramble to find financial assistance for students, but 200 of them had to do that. Well, ACICS sued the department, and they won because the department didn't follow its process. Thank God for due process. So now they are back in review. Their institutions are back eligible to avail themselves for financial aid. But I have vowed for the 15 years I've been there that my 792 institutions will not have to worry about federal financial aid because of something we didn't do. It is an interesting process. So far, so good? This is, you know, rehashed for those, but for the two of you, are you okay? Okay, good. I'm a former faculty member, so I look for head shakes and smiles and stuff. Nobody's ever fallen asleep during this either, so I'm banking on that, too. When we talk about SACS-COC, and I realize that's, for those of you who've been around a while, that's still tough to roll off your tongue because forever it was SACS who accredited institutions. We had the College Commission, we had the K-12 Commission, we had a Technical College Commission, and each of those commissions had to send their recommendations to the SACS Board for them to actually approve the actions. Well, about 10 years ago, no longer does the SACS Board have anything to do with the accreditation of institutions. Each of the commission's boards now have their own authority. And so we became separately incorporated from the parent company, SACS, and just kept the acronym that we had of SACS-COC. So it is SACS-COC that accredits institutions. So you will often hear me when people, I started to tell Sam this morning when he said, when we went through SACS accreditation, I'm like, SACS-COC, Sam. It makes a difference. But it is our members who rule us. As I said, the presidents of the 792 member institutions, you know, run the place. We can't do anything. This past December, we brought forward to the membership an opportunity for what we call the differentiated accreditation process. It's a shorter process for institutions with which we've never had trouble. Our institutions were saying, why do I have to go through all of this, you know, when I've always lived by the rules and I've never had a problem? And so our membership said, fine, let's see if we can't come up with a shorter process. So we have identified that. We couldn't implement it, however, until the membership approved it. Two years ago, we put in a new data management system with the commission. Because I needed the institutions to pay for it, we had to get them to approve it. And so we took to them this new data management system using Salesforce that's going to allow institutions to upload all of their documents. That's the ultimate goal, so no more paper. The money that they will save in postage and UPS and FedEx costs should be offset by the $500 a year technology fee that will just be built into the budget formula. So anything major we do, in '17, we took through a new set of standards. It was actually a revised, reorganized set of standards, but we couldn't implement them until the membership approved it. So it is the membership who is in charge of this organization. As I said, we are a membership organization. They are represented by a 77-member Board of Trustees, and that board, the membership in December elects the board at our annual meeting, and they also elect an appeals committee. Anytime we drop an institution from membership because they haven't abided by our standards or they're out of compliance, too many of them, they get to appeal that decision. That is the only decision that is appealable. Because if they go on warning or they go on probation, they are still fully accredited. They haven't lost anything. They've gained negative publicity, but they haven't lost any rights or privileges within the commission. Once we drop them from membership, however, not only do they, you know, lose the right to say they're accredited, but they cannot get federal financial aid either. So they have a right to be heard if they don't agree with what the decision is. Those two bodies are elected in December. The board itself then selects a 13-member executive council, on which I said Dr. Sims will now serve, starting January 1st, it was, yes. And then the other members of the board serve as what we call the CNR committees. Those are the committees that review the actual compliance certifications and recommendations from the committees that go out to visit the institutions. And I'll show you that process in a minute. You don't see me anywhere on there. I don't get a vote. I run the process, I don't get a vote. So when people are mad with us, even though I'm the one that gets all the phone calls and all the letters, I don't get a vote in this process. This is a peer review process. It's a membership organization. I ceased being a member when I became president. I used to be a member, and I used to vote, but now I have to run the process. So if you look at me anywhere, I would begin under the executive council, and then my staff would fall under that. Okay? David Johnson, who is the provost at North Alabama, is our incoming board chair. So Alabama is well-represented in the commission this year. He was vice chair last year, so we're excited about him coming up. When you look at the trustees, as I said, there are 77 of them. Every state has a minimum of four board members. Three of them represent the institutions, and one of them is a public member, someone who has no affiliation with an institution at all, a doctor, a lawyer, a plumber, you know, anybody out in the community. And we've had folks from all different walks of life represent the community on our board. We figured that since they inherit what we produce, then they ought to have something to say about what it is that we do. When I first got there 15 years ago, I moved to Georgia from the northern Virginia area, northern Virginia DC area. And I don't know if you recall or if you paid any attention, but on the license plates in Washington, it says taxation without representation because they don't have an elected official in Congress, but they pay taxes. And we had at the time five international institutions, one of whom had been accredited with us since 1968, and they had never had a vote on the board because our international institutions, you know, were not in one of the 11 states. So I asked if we could take one of our at-large positions and put those international institutions into their own state, if you will, and let them rotate a member on the board. So now we have an international member on our board as well. The other 32 serve as what we call at-large members. And we distributed them in several ways. One, to make sure we have a gender balance and an ethnicity balance and a public-private school balance. We also distributed based on the number of institutions in a state. So Texas, North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida have more members on the board because they have more institutions in their particular states. We do public, private, and for-profit institutions we accredit. We have everything from associate degrees through law degrees, medical degrees. Our institutions, you know, cover the gambit. Our board only meets twice a year, once in June and once in December, which is one reason that the process for reaffirmation takes a while. Used to be only presidents served on the board, and now we have folks from all over the institutions. We had a college librarian on there for a while, which we had never had before. So it is truly a peer-reviewed board and a peer-reviewed, I mean, a peer-run institution. I mentioned the appeals committee already. Our principles have 14 sections to them. The first one is the most basic, and it says that, as a member of this commission, I agree to open up my books to you and welcome all kinds of feedback from you. And I'm not going to lie to you, there's no reason to. So it's what we call the standard of integrity. We have had institutions, however, that have forgotten they made that promise, and we've had to go back and say, hmm, something happened here. The examples that I will share with you today, by the way, have been made public already, so I'm not giving away any secrets. One of the things that happened with an institution in Florida was that it did what we ask all institutions to do, and that is commiserate with each other. It's a peer-review process. Call somebody and say, what did you tell the commission when you were trying to get through reaffirmation? But if you're going to do that and they share a report with you, please change the name of that institution before you submit it as part of yours. Yeah. Because it raises the question, if you misled us about this, about what else have you misled us? You know, and it just put, I mean, it's just... University of North Carolina got hit with an integrity violation. They had a course that they offered that had no teeth in it. There were no requirements. Unfortunately, many athletes were put into that course. 48% of the enrollment were athletes, and nobody fessed up that they were doing that. That's an integrity violation. There's no reason, if this is a continuous improvement process, there's no reason for you to lie to us about what's going on or to mislead us about what's going on. So there is no information that an institution submits to demonstrate compliance with integrity. It's one of those things that as the documents are submitted, as the committees go out to visit, they get a feel for whether this institution's really, you know, functioning on the up and up with us. So that doesn't happen often, but that's a biggie. That's a core requirement. You've got to be open and honest to get through this process, or it's ridiculous for you to be here with us. I am pleased to say I do not recall or have, and I think I'm right on that, there's never been an Alabama institution that has been hit with integrity non-compliance, so I don't expect that's going to happen, especially with the chair and all these folks from Alabama on the board. The second section is mission. Many institutions, community colleges, for example, that are now considering offering baccalaureate degrees, that changes your mission because you're now offering a degree at a more advanced level. So we require the boards to annually review the mission of their institutions to make sure that they're still doing what it is that they say they're going to do. Okay? The third, there are some standards that we have, like, you know, who gave you the authority to exist? And usually, that's the legislation that, you know, enabling legislation that created you. We don't need to know that every year. So the basic eligibility criteria now help for those institutions that are applying for membership with us. If you've been accredited, then you don't have to respond to those anymore. Section four is our governing board. We have a separate section on the governing board. We have a separate section on the administration and organization. There are two different sections with two different sets of requirements because there are two different roles that those two groups play. And they are parallel roles, not perpendicular roles. And when stuff starts getting into each other's lane, then we have to step back and say, are you sure you want to do that? Because it's going to put you out of compliance with what we're talking about. When I get into the standards on the governing board, because I'm going to go through them specifically, I'll talk about the challenges, for example, of having elected officials on the board. Alabama was a good citizen when you all formed. It's all your fault, and the other states have you to thank for that or blame, depending on how difficult it is. Because the governor has budget authority, you know, appoints board members and does all this, so why are you going to be on the board as chair? And in Alabama, the governor was the chair of every college board. Well, how does that work? You know, if you've got two institutions coming to you competing, and you're the chair of both boards, which one do you pick? It's like asking, which is your favorite child? You probably have one, but you don't dare verbalize that. Not if you live in your house, I'm sure. So it's those kinds of things that make it very difficult. And I recognize, because I've been a board member, telling a governor, thank you very much for your input, but you appointed me because of my expertise, so you now need to leave me alone to do my job. Your governor was kind enough to say, I'd like to still be on the board. I don't need to be chair. I've got enough other stuff to do. And all of the other institutions are following suit with that. So that's why I said last night that Alabama has been very good with their legislation and listening to what we say and the conflicts that can be avoided, you know, when you look at our standards based on what it is that the state is doing. I just got a letter from South Carolina yesterday. They want to require that students have to take, have to learn, have to read the Constitution and demonstrate they understand it, have to read the Declaration of Independence and they want to know, is it all right for the state to mandate that? You know, states mandate college requirements all the time, but we ask them to please consider the experts in curriculum development, i.e. the faculty, before they put too much stuff out there and not just legislate it. Texas Legislature mandated that every high school student can take dual enrollment. Dual enrollment was never designed for every high school student to take. It was designed initially for those students who were seniors, who had finished all of their K-12 requirements, and we didn't want them hitting the streets in the afternoon. So we said, why don't you get started on your college curriculum first, you know, while you're still here? And then we opened it up to juniors, who were high-achieving students. But for a freshman to take a college-level course when they have not met the requirements, the prerequisites of a course, does a great disservice to that student. And so, you know, there are times when the legislature steps up and we have to go, let's think about this before you do that. So I thank you for all your work, Chancellor, and Dr. Bates also was very instrumental in getting us to do that. We have a section on faculty, one on institutional planning and effectiveness. That's the assessment, student achievement, which is a big area now that the federal government has finally realized they're putting a lot of money into higher end, they want to know what they're getting for it. So they're requiring institutions to do a better job in getting students to finish, whether it's finish a course, finish a certificate, or finish a degree. They just want to make sure that they have some skills that they can go out into the workforce and do something productive. We have one on educational program structure to make sure that there are enough general ed requirements, for example. We have one on the policies, procedures, and practices, those contracts that institutions have with outside entities. We have to approve those to make sure that it's a reputable entity. We have to approve those to make sure that it's a reputable entity with whom they're partnering. We have one on library and learning information, one on academic and student support services, one on finances and physical resources, and then one to demonstrate, especially in those institutions where there are several layers of governance. For example, I worked in the Virginia Community College system for 18 years, and there was a state board, like you all are, but they had delegated some of their authority to the local college board. And so we just need to know who's on first, who's got what authority and what power. So that's what that one is. It also comes into play with our for-profit institutions because there's going to be several layers of governance when they're concerned. So you can see, we look at everything. If you can find something that we don't review, maybe you don't want to let me know because then we'll probably come up with some standards for it. But I don't think you'll find that there's any stone uncovered when we review an institution and how effective it's been. Okay? Still with me? All right. We put in two new principles with this last revision of our principles. One of them, we found that many of our institutions that were getting in trouble with us, were getting in trouble because their boards fell asleep at the wheel. They didn't understand about accreditation, they didn't know about the financial responsibilities, they didn't know about all kinds of stuff. And so our membership said, you know, we have a requirement that everybody in the institution be evaluated, except the board. So we put in a standard that now every board has to evaluate itself. We don't tell you how to do it because there are organizations out there that have a lot of boilerplates that can do that. The Association of Community College Trustees is a good one, the Association of Governing Boards, AGB, is another one. So there's lots of different ways that you can slice that. But we just need to know that you do that. And because you are a state board, then your process is going to be identified in the self-studies, if you will, the compliance certifications of every one of your institutions. So they have to be able to defend that you do that because unfortunately, we don't accredit systems, we accredit institutions. The other one is, again, because the federal government is concerned about the money it's spending, one of the things, when Virginia Fox from North Carolina was chair of the House Education Committee, she said, you know, we ought to take some of the federal financial aid money away from an institution when the students don't pay back their loans. And so I said, you know, I have a doctor of philosophy degree, but I didn't major in philosophy, so logic is not necessarily my strong suit, but help me understand how it is that the federal government loans the money. The federal government determines how much money a student can get. Even if a student wins the lottery, an institution cannot make them pay it back. So why are you taking money away from the institutions when they have nothing to do with this? I haven't gotten an answer to that yet, I'm still trying to figure it out. But what we can do is to educate students on what happens when you borrow money. Because many of our students, no matter how young or old they are coming to school, oftentimes have never had that much money at their, you know, available to them at one time. And they don't understand that you might be able to default on a different kind of loan and file bankruptcy and it's going away, but a federal loan is one that even after you're dead, your family has to pay back that loan. And students just never think about that kind of thing. And so we now have a requirement that every institution must provide financial literacy for its students, not just those who are on federal loans, but just to borrow money for, I mean, to open a credit card. You know, college freshmen are ripe for credit card companies. They send you here, now that you're in college, you have a credit card. And students go, great, they don't talk about it, but it's got to be paid back, you know? They think their mom and dad's going to pay it back, at least that's what my son did until I brutally awaited him to the fact that I don't, so that one's got your name on it, you figure it out. So those are the two new standards that we added in the revision that we just did. Okay? The reaffirmation process itself is a two-year process, and it starts with the leadership team of each institution come into a meeting so we can tell them what's changed since the last time they were there 10 years prior. They go home and their institution puts together responses to the compliance certification. They send that report in, and we have a committee of their peers who review it, and they go through it and say, yes, you're in compliance, nope, you're not in compliance, or I can't figure out whether you're in compliance or not. That report is sent back to the college president, who has an opportunity to send a focused report, a report focusing on those non-compliance and unsure compliance items. Those two documents then go to the committee that's coming to the institution, and part of their responsibility is to make sure that now we're in compliance with everything that, or that they're in compliance with everything that they're doing. They make a recommendation to the CNR committee, remember those 64 board members that we talked about? They look at it and say, yeah, everything looks okay, or no, there's still some areas here, or these people just are not listening, and so we need to get their attention, and they recommend a sanction for them. Their recommendation goes then to the executive committee or the executive council because the committees only see the reports that come to them, but the council sees all of the reports. And for consistency, if nothing else, the council is able to say, you know, committee A put this institution on warning, and committee B put this institution on probation, but it's the same thing. And so we need to be consistent here. So the executive council's recommendation is the one that goes forward to the entire board, and it's not until our board votes that the status of an institution's accreditation is determined. This is the two-year process that I talked about. Because you all have 24 institutions, they're all at a different stage at different times. I just ask that you be patient with each of the presidents as they struggle through this. We have had, when I first went to the commission, we had 805-member institutions, we now have 792. Most of that is because of mergers. You know, times are tough, and to keep institutions open when they're small and they could best serve a community if they were a branch campus of another institution, and you can save administrative costs and, you know, and all kinds of things. And we've had several institutions that have merged. Georgia alone had 14, or 15 institutions that merged down into seven. So we've become quite good at, I'm not suggesting that you all want to merge any, but we've gotten good at that. Here we go. Now you can wake up. There are three things that we ask the board to do. We ask you to make policy, not carry it out, but decide the direction of your institutions. You know, what are the policies that you want to follow? We ask that you hire, evaluate, and if necessary, fire the CEO. For you, that would be the chancellor. For the presidents, it's usually the chancellor who makes these decisions. Although oftentimes, the chancellor will bring the decision, especially the one to terminate a presidency, to the state board. But institutions where it's not a state board, just a local board, they're the ones who will make that determination. And then the third thing is to have the fiduciary responsibility of the institution, make sure that there's enough money to keep the doors open. Those are the only three things we ask of you. There are a lot of other responsibilities you might have, but these are the three for which we hold you responsible. Now, there's some pieces that impact each of these. The first one is one that suggests that you, first of all, have to have the authority to do your job, that's usually in the enabling legislation. You have to exercise fiduciary responsibility over the budget. You have to ensure that the chair and the majority of the board are free from conflict. These include things like, if you're the president of the, or the chairman of the board, you cannot have a relative who works at the institution. Because it begins into question, brings into question, any decision you make may be made on behalf of whoever it is in your family who works there. So we've had board chairs who have had to step down from the chairmanship, can stay on the board but can't be chair, just because of that perceived conflict. We suggest that board members should not be given contracts to do work within the institutions, unless it's a closed-bid process. Because otherwise, it's, there's a perceived conflict that the only reason you got that contract was because you're on the board. And we just want to keep the institution free from that kind of perception. We like to keep you free from it too, but our institutions are the ones that we're more concerned about. That you demonstrate that you're not controlled by a minority of board members, so that you don't have three people who are always running everything, that it is indeed a board process, not a little group process. I worked in San Antonio, at San Antonio College, as a matter of fact, I said, I'm probably the only person in the world that started their career at SAC and will end it at SACS. But San Antonio College was part of the Alamo Community College District. They had a seven-member board, three white, three Hispanic, and one black. And everything that was voted on was a four-three board split, everything. They stayed in trouble with the commission until we got them to understand that you're going to have to do a better job of compromising with the other side, you know, not just the one swing vote that was in the middle, because it is a board decision. No single board member has any more authority than any other board member, not even the chair. Because your authority comes as a board, not as an individual on that board. And that's a, that's a tough one to help some people understand. And then this one says that the CEO is not the presiding officer of the institution's board. We also suggest that the board president, or in this case, I mean, the college president, in this case, the chancellor, would not be a member of the board. If the board's role is to hire, evaluate, and if necessary, fire the CEO, that's like putting your child, you know, on the same level with you. And I wish Reggie would try to tell me what I could do some days, you know? So it's cleaner if the chancellor is the chancellor, or the president's the president, and then the board is the board. Okay? So that's one set of criteria. Another one says that you review the mission regularly. I mentioned that a minute ago, especially institutions that are going from single gender to both genders, you know, are obviously going to have a mission change or the other way around. Community colleges now that are adding baccalaureate degrees, we have senior institutions that are adding associate degrees. That's a mission change as well, so it goes in both directions. We ask that you have a policy as well as your own behavior that says that you know the difference between governing and administering an institution. This is one that tends to get institutions in trouble sometimes when board members start telling the CEO how to do things and, you know. For us, the board's job is to tell the chancellor, this is what needs to be done, but to let the chancellor decide how to do it. And if the chancellor brings you a plan and you don't like the plan, then you turn down the plan and say, go back to the drawing board and come up with something else. You don't sit there and try to come up with a plan. That's that difference I told you between governance and administration. Some of our institutions televise their board meetings, it is better than reality TV sometimes because you see the real people coming out, you know, saying, well, what about, you should, you didn't do this for my institution. Well, you don't have an institution. Once you get appointed to the board, you have 24 institutions. And that's tough sometimes because you want to be able to, you know, make sure that the folks in your district, you know, are well-represented, but you have to remember that it's going to be a trade-off, you know? Ms. Baker's district may get something this board meeting, when Mr. McAnally's might get something the next board meeting. You've got to make sure that everybody gets a piece of what's going on. When that doesn't happen, then unfortunately, it's going to hit the media, and that's going to be one of the ways that I get to come back in a not-so-friendly capacity, finding out what y'all doing there. We have one that says that you regularly evaluate the CEO. We have had presidents in the past that have been there 10, 15 years, have never been evaluated by their board. You don't know whether you have a good CEO or not if you've never evaluated him. And it's unfair because we've also had presidents who have been dismissed that were never evaluated. They never knew that there was something wrong, nobody bothered to tell them, they just said, well, we've decided we want to go in a different direction. If I hear that phrase one more time from a board. You know, you need to tell them because you've ruined somebody's career by just saying, go, because nobody's going to be willing to take a chance on them if they don't know what the issue was in the first place. And so part of your role is to evaluate. Remember, hire, evaluate, and if necessary, fire the CEO, not hire and then fire. There is a middle process there that we ask you to engage in. This one says that the board addresses conflicts of interest. The state of Alabama may indeed have a conflict of interest policy for appointees. If they do, you all need to adopt that as yours. Let me tell you why that becomes important. I have, I will not be able to retire in the southern region because I will have anger at every governor that we have somewhere along the line. This one is the governor of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. There apparently was a state statute that allowed the governor to disband boards if it was not representative of the people of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. But it had never been used in a college and university before. It was used, you know, in a museum board or a community service board. But he decided that the University of Louisville's board, he didn't like that board, so he disbanded the board. Every board has to have a set of bylaws, and in those bylaws, you have a process that talks about how you will terminate a board member's term and for what reasons. And that statute was not in their bylaws. And so for us, for the governor to step in and say that, that was undue political influence. Okay? He's not on that board, so he's stepping from outside, coming in, telling the board, you know, that they had to go. Well, this governor, this is the immediate past governor, he didn't like that, so he made a YouTube video to tell his constituents, I don't work for the accreditor, I work for you, the people who elected me. Fortunately, the chair of the Senate Education Committee didn't like the fact that the governor had that much authority, and they got the law changed. And it was funny because on the day of the election, when he lost, I said to myself, if you had worked for the government, for the accrediting body, you might have gotten re-elected, but nonetheless. So those kinds of things are important. You have to have that conflict of interest policy, and you have to live with that conflict of policy. Now, there'll be times when you'll vote and you'll have a conflict, and you have to declare that you have a conflict in that particular situation. But you've got to do that because it protects the institution from people going around saying, boy, that's a bunch of crooks over there, they just take care of themselves, they're not worried about the institution, and we don't want that to happen. There is one that says that you, that's the one, that you have the process of how you're going to terminate board members and for what reasons. Again, if the state of Alabama has that process, then you're going to have to adopt that process as yours, because when the teams come in, they're going to want to see your policies. They're not going to go read state statute, they want to see your policy. Here's one that says that you protect the institution from undue political influence. This was what I alluded to earlier when I said, you know, telling governors, thank you very much, you know, for sharing your opinion, but I'm on this board and you put me here because of my expertise, and I may not be able to do what you want me to do. This is the one that has gotten me front and center, there's a good phrase, in front of boards and governors wonder, who is that one? In Georgia, for example, Georgia Tech is the engineering school in the state. Everybody knows that, except the University of Georgia has a handful of engineering programs because they're not in Atlanta, they're outside of Atlanta, they wanted access. Well, they came forward to the board asking for additional opportunities for their students in engineering. Well, the then-president of Georgia Tech went ballistic, saying, that's, no, 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 that's us. So he went to the governor and said, could you stop this? Well, the governor called every board member and said, I don't want this to happen. Except the board chair didn't particularly appreciate the governor calling, so he called me and said, can the governor do this? I said, the governor can do whatever he wants, that's his institution. But you will get in trouble with us if you do that because you're the ones who are governing the system, not the governor. They voted, and it passed nine to eight, to give Georgia the engineering courses. Never heard from the governor, but he wasn't real happy. Recently, University of South Carolina has a new president, and they had a presidential search. The governor is a member of that board, and he, however, had put somebody in to sit in his chair as the official governor's representative. So he was no longer on the board as far as we were concerned because he had appointed somebody. But then, when they were selecting the president, he decides to call every board member and tell them who he wants for president. Well, again, that's undue political influence as far as, if he had stayed on the board, wouldn't have been an issue because there would have been a board member talking to another board member. But because he stepped off the board and put somebody else in, it became undue political influence. So our board had to deal with that this past December, and asking for additional information. So there's a committee that's going to go down to Columbia to try to figure out what's going on, and it'll come back to the June agenda. So those are the kinds of things that get us to come back, and why we ask you to live by those rules so we don't have to come back in that capacity. Here's the one that says that you regularly evaluate your own responsibilities and what it is that you do. This is the one that talks about that standard 14 that says, who's got what governing authority? In Virginia, as I mentioned, in the community college system, the presidents were appointed by the state board, but the interview process was conducted by the local board. The state budget was disseminated to the colleges from the state board, but the local boards managed those budgets. So that's the kind of thing we need to know. If you've got that kind of distribution of authority, how does it work? And that's what this particular one refers to. And that's what this particular one refers to. Those are our requirements. These are the things that we also suggest boards need to familiarize themselves with and be concerned about, because they impact the effective running of an institution. What kind of long-range planning or strategic planning are you doing? Do you assess what it is that you're doing, and how well you're doing it, and what kind of changes do you make because of that assessment there? That's stuff that you need to ask each of the presidents, or the chancellor does regularly, and he can then give you a report for it. If you're still doing developmental education or remedial education, what's the impact of that on your budget? What's the impact of that on enrollment? Are those students moving forward? Many states around the country have done away with developmental ed or remedial ed, and they're incorporating reviews into that first introductory math course, for example, or providing opportunities in the learning labs outside of the class, so that the students won't have to spend, you know, four courses trying to catch up with something that may not need four courses. What is, what is our completion rate? What does our graduation rate look like? If indeed, your purpose is to get students credentialed so they can get out in the world of work, you know, how does that look? What is it that we're doing? I have institutions that are senior institutions that have a 5% completion rate. That's totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable. And the federal government is trying to decide, do they hold the institutions accountable, or do they hold the accreditors accountable when those rates are low? So what we did, for each institution, they have identified a minimum graduation rate, as it were. I don't feel comfortable establishing a minimum graduation rate that all institutions have to meet, because my institutions are too different. Even all my community colleges are different. Some of your institutions may have a 60% graduation rate or completion rate, and others may have a 20%, even though they're all community colleges. But what we've done is to take where the institution is right now, we ask them to identify either their iPads data, or their National Student Clearinghouse data, pick one, and that's the baseline for each institution, and we're going to see them move forward from their own baseline. So each of your institutions has one of those targets. It's cheaper to keep a student than it is to recruit a new one. It's better PR to keep a student than it is to recruit a new one. I was pleased to hear, I don't remember if it was Pat or Tim, that you had a 67% retention rate or something? Yeah, it was a trend, I understand. Corrected, thank you very much. You know, that's important, because that says that the students have, are comfortable with what you're doing, they have faith that you're preparing them for the future, and they're willing to stay there to get through it. How often do you review your programs? Many times, programs stay on the books, because the faculty member who developed that program is still there teaching it. And that's not necessarily reason enough to do that. Sweetbryer College threatened to close, their board voted to close them a few years ago. The alumni went crazy, because the board just made that decision, which of course, the board could, but they didn't consult anybody. They fought it and kept the institution open. But one of their hallmark programs was an equestrian program. Oh, and Sweetbryer first opened, side saddle riding was what they were teaching. And I told them, I said, if you're still teaching side saddle riding in 2017, you know, you have not reviewed this program, because I don't know of anybody anywhere that's still looking for side saddle riders. You need to upgrade and update that equestrian program. Many times, it sounds ridiculous, but our, our general ed courses have not been updated, you know, we've not put in our, in our technical programs, they're still teaching, you know, for old equipment rather than for current equipment. You need to review those programs, have those institutions review those programs regularly, at least every five years. Every program should go through a program review. Transfer of credit is still a big issue. This is one of the rationales that the department gave for getting rid of national and regional accreditors, because they said that they were getting too many complaints that students who went to nationally accredited institutions were having difficulty getting their credits accepted, and regionally accredited institutions. And I tried to explain to them that I have institutions we accredit that don't accept each other's credits. In Virginia, we were 23 institutions governed by one governing board, and we didn't accept each other's credits sometimes. That's the dumbest thing in the universe, it has nothing to do with nationally or regionally accredited, it has to do with institutional choice, because it's faculty and institutions that determine what credit they're going to accept. Florida is probably the poster child of best handling that, because every institution in Florida, two-year and four-year, has the same course numbering system. So that when an institution starts at a community college and they transfer to a senior institution, that credit comes over, doesn't matter where they took it. And then the, yeah, there's the last one. So you have a tough job. I thank you for doing it so well. You all really are a great example of how, working together, a system can continue to move forward, and I, I would love to pack you up and take you with me every time I have to go do this presentation, but I do reference you often, I'd love to give you that. So, any questions?
Dr. Weehan, I, I just have to comment, I still have in my files the letter that you wrote recommending this new governance for this community college system. So, thank you for your vision, and thank you for your leadership, and we appreciate your guidance in these, all these different years.
Did I say the same thing this time I did last?
No, ma'am.
Uh-oh.
It was bad.
Oh, okay. You've been here longer, and now, yeah, I understand, and for the two of them, they'll, you help them out, they'll get there.
The chairman actually sent me the link to your first presentation, it was a very big help, and I watched it a few times to present. Appreciate advice, we'll get information, have every board member.
And I really don't know my death well, but I'm saying.
It's okay. They're doing fine.
I've had the opportunity to talk to you a couple of times. There are reasons on the all sides of the negotiations, varying expectations, and how work has been, and the work that you've been doing, gives me confidence.
Oh, great, we have confidence in them too, they wouldn't still be members. Pat has just been kind enough to remind me too, that I forgot to mention that Jackie Screws was a new member of our board. This board just came on board in January, and I've been on vacation, so I apologize. Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chancellor, thank you for the invitation, and thank you again for the work that you all do, I am appreciative of it, on behalf of all the students that you serve.
Thank you again, our members on the local side community. We will take a brief recess for the works, before beginning the work session. And our next board meeting will be here, in this room, April 12, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., incoming to the board. At this time, I want to take a motion to adjourn. And if I say aye, I stand adjourned.